Well, welcome to FuseLogic TV in Alberta Live today. I'm your host Walter Schwabe. Thank you for being so very patient. Joined here in studios here in Sherwood Park, Alberta, I'm joined by councillor Roxanne Carr. Hello Roxanne.
Hi Walter, it's good to be here.
Thank you for being on the show. So, we want to talk about transparency today. We want to talk a little bit about the business of government, in this case municipal level government.
Yes.
And we might actually go to the other levels of discussion anyways. So let's talk, the first question I have for you is, you know, how would you rate Strathcona County in terms of transparency as we operate today?
Well Walter, I'm glad you asked that question. I'm happy to tell you that personally I don't think we're the worst.
Okay, well that's good news.
That was the good news. And now we have to talk about the bad news.
Okay, alright.
We're certainly not the best.
Okay, so we could be though, right?
I'd like to see that happen, and my residents would like to see that happen.
Okay, so this is really, today's show and this topic and this issue has really been spurred on by a few kind of key factors that have transpired over the last while. What are some of those things that have been happening just in general, like you know, comments from residents or you know, other things? Can you help us better understand how we got to today?
Well, you know Walter, we are active, both of us on Twitter. You're very active in all forms of social media and I've really respected that about you. But what I am seeing on Twitter especially, is the buzzwords coming out a lot, aren't they? Well, we've only got 140 characters, so I guess we have to use short forms and buzzwords. But transparency, you know what is transparency? Well, to myself and my residents, it's an open and honest communication. It's a forthright way of doing business. When my residents call me, I want to be easily accessible. And when they ask me the questions, I don't want to beat around the bush. I want to have those answers for them. If I can't get them, I turn to administration or my co-councillors. And I expect openness and honesty at that point as well.
Well, you know, I don't think it's any surprise to anyone watching this from the county, as to why you were acclaimed in the last election Roxanne. And that's just simply because you can tell how you operate business in Kentucky, business as an individual councillor, right, one of nine. You know, you have these certain standards, certain processes and things that you want to uphold your level of operations to. And I think that's great. I mean, as a resident, not living in your ward, it doesn't matter to me in this case. You know, your messaging is one that I obviously support. So, in terms of the buzzword transparency, that's all fine and dandy, right? If we get to put that on some sort of, you know, county document, we're being more transparent, that's fine. But for me, the true test of transparency is action, right? So, let's talk about what's, you know, how do we get from the mid-range, mid-level of municipal transparency to say the top and be a leader? What would you suggest in that way?
Well, what I want to see for my residents, is I want them to see the entire decision-making process. I want them to be with me and experience what I experience. We've got some very professional administration. We get top-rate information from them and facts. So we go through that fact gathering, the fact presenting process. And then on council, we are responsible, as elected officials, to ask the hard questions. We have got to have the discussion, have the debate, that leads us logically to the vote, to the decision. And I want my residents to see all of that.
Okay, well for those watching, who may not understand the precise protocols, process of a council and its operations, let's talk about, can you define for us what in-camera, the term in-camera means?
I'm glad you asked that Walter, because my residents are often confused by that term, because you think in-camera is exactly what we're doing.
Is this, this is in-camera.
We're in-camera.
Right, yeah, 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 yeah.
Not so in the government world. In-camera means private, confidential, with elected officials and key staff who are giving specific information only. That's what we term in-camera. Now, as a municipality, we are governed, and in fact we're children of the province, we're governed by the Municipal Government Act. We also are regulated and have to abide by the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. So, those acts say specifically, everything should be available to the public unless it involves land, legal or labour. So contractual information, information that would hurt members of the public if it got out financially.
Sure.
Or got out in that way. So, we protect that by going in-camera. Now you can go in-camera before a meeting, during a meeting, if necessary, or after a meeting to discuss specific points, then you can come out of in-camera again.
Right, so if the discussion migrates within the agenda to something that's going to be sensitive in that way, the three L's I guess?
Yes.
Then mayor and council can immediately say, okay, we've got to go in-camera session for this and away you go, right?
Exactly.
Okay, so what is it about that process currently that's happening in the county that we would want to change and do differently, if anything at all?
Well, from my perspective and from the questions I've got from residents, I am concerned about the two to four hour time slot before open public meetings that we have, and we call them in-camera. So, if you look at two to four hours before every public meeting, and then you look at the timeline of our public meetings, which are often about averaging five hours, that time doesn't balance up too well to me or to my residents. And so, what I would like to see, and we do see a little bit of it...
Is that with, sorry, is that with every meeting?
With every meeting, and we normally have two public meetings per month, so every second Tuesday.
Okay.
And then at times, if there is a specific issue, there can be called another in-camera meeting.
Right, it can be carried over or...
It can be carried over or a special one called. So, I look to, I would look to shorten that.
Okay.
And in some cases, on some days, some of our councillors have actually succeeded in doing that. Because we're going along, we're talking about a topic, and one of us will say, and should say in my mind, is this a legal matter? Are we talking human resource, labour issues? Are we talking contractual land agreements? And if not, explain to us, administration, why we're talking about this now? Why are these questions coming out? Can we do it in public?
Okay, let's, I learn, as my grade 10 physics teacher will attest to, I learn by example and images and visual, or analogies at least, is probably the best. When they stopped doing analogies in physics class, I was, you know, I couldn't keep up, so not smart enough. Anyways, so let's put this into the context of something that's relevant, it's recent. Let me ask you then, is the power line issue that we're going through, you know, it's plaguing this county, bury the lines? It's like that simple, right? As far as I'm concerned, anyways.
It's simple to me too Walter, I gotta doubt you.
Bury the lines, right? We had the premier out here, what, yesterday, talking about the importance of these lines. What I would have hoped, and I wasn't at the luncheon, but I would have hoped somebody would have just walked up and said, look, yeah, okay, if you really think we need them, then bury them. But I digress. Anyways, would that issue, if that came up before council, would something like that be categorized, and I suppose it depends on what, but would that be categorized in-camera or would that be something that could be public?
No, in, from my perspective, my personal perspective, bringing up the power lines must go in-public. Having said that, if we get to some kind of legal point where if our municipality could prevent something by buying the utility corridor, I give that as an example, because it's so extreme and out there, it's not possible to begin with.
Yeah, sure.
That is provincial land.
That'd be cool, but yeah, right.
It'd be cool. How many trillionaires do you know?
Yeah.
So, no, I cannot envision any circumstance where that would or should go in-camera.
Okay, so in the past then, has something arisen where maybe on the agenda, a resident has come before council to raise an issue, and as soon as they raise the issue, it turns into something that then must be discussed in-camera? Is that possible?
Normally, when a resident comes before council in an open session, that resident is there to put forward his concerns or her concerns, put forward the facts, and in fact we do not debate at that moment in time, that particular issue.
Okay, so you hear it, right.
As a general. So we hear it, and then that resident is told that the mayor's office will go to administration, will look through that, and will give them a response.
So, out of, on average, on a typical agenda, right, I mean a five-hour meeting in the public eye, how many docket items are we talking about here, give or take?
Well, we'll go seven or eight to 12.
Okay, so then of those seven or eight to 12, are all the issues including in-camera session agenda items, are they all on the same agenda?
No, we can have five or six different items, or we could have two of those that might have had to be looked at in-camera, come forward.
Okay, so then, I mean you and I, to give a, kind of, you know, putting two to four hours on something, I mean you and I could easily, I'm sure, hold the attention of the online audience right now for two to four hours, talking about transparency, right?
Yes.
I mean, we could fill airtime with the best of them.
Yes.
Okay, but at some point though, it'll probably become repetitive and maybe not as credible as say, or you know, whatever, going to the fourth hour. So are you saying then with respect to shortening the timeout that you mentioned earlier, is it that we're just, you know, are we wasting time? Could we be doing this publicly? Is it a, like what are some of the issues? Why are we always going two to four hours every meeting?
For the in-camera or private meetings.
For in-camera or private meetings, yeah.
I want to see ourselves as elected officials, not only in my municipality, but in other municipalities, to be more diligent, to be more dogmatic, and to keep questioning those topics. And saying, I want this in-public, I want it in-public. And only when we all agree can it be dragged back into the proper realm, which is in the public realm.
Okay, what's some of the resistance to that?
You know, sometimes I hear people say, well, I feel more comfortable. Like you and I feel very comfortable in this meeting room by ourselves and another several thousand of our best friends. Yes, so you know what, put it all on webcast. And that is one thing, and one reason why I say that our municipality certainly has a few stars. We have a few checkmarks against our name, because we did, and I was one of the more aggressive councillors, in getting the webcasting brought in for our public meetings.
Right, absolutely.
Why? Because our residents are busy, they've got lives, they might not be able to watch us till 10 o'clock at night, or 6:00 AM in the morning, or wherever. That is part of transparency, because they can now see the discussion process. And if I don't ask the right questions when it comes to the snow clearance bylaw, I want my phone to ring.
Right.
I want my residents to hold me accountable Walter.
Well, I mean, and with respect to that, I mean, I remember being a director on the local chamber, and the sign bylaw was an issue, right, that we were tackling at the time. So things like that come up, right?
Yeah.
And so, yeah, I mean, I think that as a councillor, it behooves you to want to be accessible, want to be available. It's a tough job, I don't envy you. It's a tough job, you've always got to be accessible. So, who needs to take action then? You mentioned that councillors need to be more diligent in these in-camera sessions to ask questions as to why we're still in-camera and why can't we be? Is that the only thing that needs to change?
No, administration has their part to play. I mean, we have a ledge and legal department. We have a team of private lawyers that do service our county, work for our county, and they need to be on the ball at all times. And I, on our agenda, we actually now, and didn't in the past, we have them put down, so why is this supposed to be in-camera? Quote the section of the FOIP Act to us, because we want to know.
Sure.
So we want everybody to be on the ball with this.
That's good, that's great. Ladies and gentlemen, if you've just joined us here on Alberta Live, I'm speaking with Strathcona County councillor Roxanne Carr. We're talking about transparency, in terms of how a council might operate more transparently. And we're talking about in-camera sessions versus open to the public sessions. Now, if you have questions for the councillor, please make sure that you join our chatroom while you're watching, or ask us on Twitter, and it looks like we do have a question coming from the audience. Go ahead.
Carla in the chatroom asks, who decides when to go in-camera?
Oh Carla, thank you for that question very much. Carla, if it's the Carla we're probably thinking of, you know, as a long-time Strathcona County resident, and ask a good question. So, let's talk a little bit about the process then. So, who makes the call?
It can be made prior to the meeting. As I say, we tell our administration, we want to know how confidential this is, if for example, it's a human resource issue, they're going to quote that section in FOIP that tells us that, and they'll say, this needs to go in-camera. However, it has happened that we have been in a public session, and one of the councillors or one of the administration has tripped up, and we're all only human, and we might have gone just past that point, which would reference a contractual agreement or a company who hasn't signed a contract. And of course then all the red lights go on, figuratively speaking, and we say, it's time for an in-camera.
Right, right, okay. All right, so then, I'm sure that answers Carla's question, it's pretty simple.
Yes, and you know, we've been talking about in-camera sessions Walter, but there's another area that does bother me and bothers several other councillors, and that is our workshops. Now these workshops are really interesting sessions. They are not advertised to the public, but they are chock full of public information.
So when you say a workshop, what does that, what does that mean? You guys pull out the hammers and the nails and the wood and you start building birdhouses?
I wish, I have no talent in that area.
Me either.
Maybe glue and popsicle sticks.
I wreck more stuff than I fix with tools. I love, I love having power tools, but I wreck more things. So what is a workshop then in that context?
A workshop is a great place for us to get together with administration. They've just maybe come off a public session, open engagement sessions with the public, our residents, talking about say, the aquatic strategy. So they've had a series of sessions with the public, they can bring those numbers to us, they can bring all those comments to us. And that is a great session. And you know, I have 20, 30 residents calling me, asking me for that same information that is presented. So Roxanne, I've given my two cents worth and I'm not hearing anything back, you know that.
Sure.
So, I want them to be in those public workshop sessions, I want them to be public.
The opportunity to at least attend and pull the information if it's important to them.
And watch those councillors, what questions they're asking, because they're representing you, they are you, that's all you've got at those levels of government.
So, you know, in terms of, we'll take another question from the audience in just a second, but in terms of, there's two sides to this story in general. We have, we have council and administration on one side, and then the municipal government, we'll just say. And then we have residents and their participation, participation in the process. Now, we all know that as individuals, the majority of us, you know, don't come out to vote, right? In something as simple as an election, you voted, I voted, it only takes a few minutes, and yet still, people stay on the couch or don't come out and vote, right? So, in some respects, right, certain residents get what they deserve, in some respects, okay? Just putting that out there. So we should all vote, number one. But then we're talking about other levels of participation and how we can participate. We've talked about remotely via webcam, watching the webcast of a council meeting. We've talked about identifying information somehow remotely. You know, I suppose that as a county, we could be better at that, you know, moving towards that open government process and opening data. I mean, I don't know why frankly, the county is dragging its feet on opening data here. I mean, it's, we've got, we now, as I probably mentioned to you in the past councillor, that you know, Canada has signed an open government partnership with over 50 countries around the world. And so this isn't a question of if, this is a question of when. And municipalities, just like the lessons that you're sharing with regards to transparency in terms of how a council might work and handle information as it works through its problems or issues or debates, these are other things that it needs to tackle. So what are your thoughts on those kinds of issues?
Absolutely, absolutely. You know Walter, we have talked about this before, and we at Strathcona County call ourselves leaders. Well, in some instances we are, and I'm proud of that. But we need to step out more. For true leaders, let's get out there and show the rest of Alberta what we've really got.
And the world.
And the world, absolutely. And I always respected Alberta before I even came to this province, because they were the ones out at those international trade shows, pushing their cattle, pushing their genetics.
Right.
We are leaders, we know that. And this municipality is a leader, and could be a much better leader.
I completely agree with you, wholeheartedly. I think we do some really great stuff, and I think we have a whole lot more to offer. You know, I frankly don't think that we should be shipping bitumen down through Keystone, I think the upgrader should be right here in the county. We had seven on the docket, we don't have seven on the docket anymore.
No, we don't.
And if we continue to ship our bitumen unrefined down south, we lose money, because the product isn't refined, we can charge more money for a refined product, we lose jobs and we lose taxes right here in this county. So, yeah, I mean, there's all sorts of things we could do. Let's take a question from the audience, if that's okay?
Sure.
So we'll take a question that we've got, Evan?
We've had a whole bunch of questions, a lot of them getting answered in the chatroom. But a particularly good one was, where'd it go?
Two of them likes it, one of us are in trouble.
Yeah, that's right, exactly, right.
Here it is. Hoppy Bunny asks, give us an example of an issue that should and an issue that should not be spoken of in-camera, just to clarify. And the follow-up from Carla was, who decides beforehand, like who's making the minutes if something should be in-camera? Who makes that decision on the agenda?
On the agenda, right? Okay, so let's do the follow-up question on the agenda, and then we'll tackle the other one about examples. Now I gave one example of like the power lines, so you answer that one, we can come back to that in a minute.
Yeah.
So who sets the minutes on the agenda?
Who looks at that, the topics on the agenda, is our ledge and legal department. They're the ones who look that over, look at the content of the topic and say, oh yeah, this is FOIP, we know this is freedom of information and protection of privacy. So that department does, plays that role for us.
Does the pre-screening and essentially says, okay, well if we're going to talk about this, then that's going to be in-camera for this reason and this reason. So going into that meeting, you already basically know that why you're going to be going into camera, right? Is that right?
Once we have the agenda, so when we're in-camera, we look at that, if we question it. And that's where the decision comes in, or that's where the role of the councillors come in. They look at that topic and they say, well, I agree it could be in-camera, but quite frankly, what you've told us so far is not legal, it should not be legally protected.
Oh, okay.
So get to that point, or we need to call this as public.
So maybe, so in some cases what you're telling me is that possibly that department is hedging its bets a little bit, or it's just saying, maybe it's being overly protective?
And have you ever met a lawyer that's over-protective?
Oh, I'm so tired of zero-tolerance lawyers, it's so ridiculous.
Yes.
You know, I mean, if we can get over zero-tolerance lawyers in law, we could be doing a whole lot of stuff that really isn't putting us at great risk, it's just this rubber stamp that just, you know. Anyways, okay, let's go, let's address this one question, and we'll take one more question if there is from the audience, and then we'll wrap up. So, we wanted to give an example of what would qualify for in-camera, what wouldn't. We gave them one example of what wouldn't, which was the power lines. What would?
What would, and I think this is a simple one that everybody will recognize, let's take for example, the province and their negotiations with the teachers' union.
Okay.
That would be something that has to be done in-camera to a certain extent. On the municipal level, I will say that when we're discussing our contracts with our staff, when we're discussing bringing in, for example, a new classification system, we brought in the Hays classification system, you know what, that was sensitive to a certain degree. And after that, it is not sensitive. When, for example, when the consultation is complete, when we've done the negotiations, when those job descriptions have been refiled, when that kind of detail work is done, when there can be no association with a description and a job and a person in those ways, then we can bring it out of camera. But absolutely, labour relations, perfect example of an in-camera.
Yeah, that makes good sense. Okay, is there any other questions Evan, from the audience currently that we'd like to address before we wrap up?
There was a good one.
So as we're going forward then, what sort of actions could residents who are watching this show either live and/or later on archive, what sort of actions can these residents take to support this initiative of increased transparency, being more diligent on behalf of councillors to ask the questions about whether we should be in-camera or not? What sort of things, like what are some simple things they can do?
You know, if you're not getting answers as a resident from your councillor, or from administration, or if you go to an open engagement session and you don't like what's happening, and I want to take that as an example, because as a councillor, I try to get it to as many open public engagement sessions as I can.
Right.
And I'm not there just to learn, and I am there to learn, because I like to see those presentations from our administration. I'm watching the public, I'm watching how we answer their questions. So if you look around and if you're not happy with the system, with the way things are being explained to you, and better yet, if you're not happy with what you're perceiving, if administration is not listening to you, you go to your councillor, that's the person that represents you.
Right.
That's your ombudsman.
Right.
And give them royal age and say, you better listen.
Okay, fair enough. Well, and I mean, that's fair, I think that most, you know, and what we want to get away from is just hear complaints, for complaint's sake, and be as constructive and as inquisitive as we can be, so that we can move forward on a given issue, right? So there is a question from the online audience, we'll take?
Yes, Hoppy Bunny asked, further back, is there ever a time where the power line discussion should be in-camera?
We did refer to this, and love to give you an example, Hoppy Bunny, but that would be an in-camera answer.
Right, right.
It's a difficult one. But there could be.
So for example, maybe I'll...
Yeah, help me out.
So there is a case where we, literally, we had Mayor Ossington on the show, and talking about that particular issue, which was why she was on, and she was talking about the legal proceedings that the county was going to be moving forward with, right? So, would that be something, clearly that's one of the L's, of the three L's, land, legal and labour. So there is probably things within that discussion that would be in-camera, right?
Absolutely. When your lawyer has given you advice on how to proceed, whether it be with another government level, or in labour, or with a private company, you would let that information be public at the peril of your constituents? And there we come to why we withhold information, it's to protect our public.
Right, okay. Well ladies and gentlemen, thank you so very much for tuning into Alberta Live here on FuseLogic TV. Once again, I was joined by the very pleasant and very smart-as-a-whip councillor Roxanne Carr, who's leading the charge for transparency with respect to this county and how it operates. If you have any questions, councillor, where can people reach you in terms of direct questions? Obviously you're on Twitter, @CouncillorCarr is the Twitter account, but where else can they reach you, how else can they reach you?
I have my own website Walter, because I want people to know why I voted the way I voted. So I give my personal slant on my website, which is www.councillorCarr.com.
Very simple.
And they can also call me at the county, or email me at car@strathcona.aab.ca.
Right, we're still dealing with that .ab.ca URL still. Well ladies and gentlemen, thank you once again for joining us, thank you again for your questions, and we really do support your thoughts on transparency, I know, and thank you very much for watching, supporting FuseLogic TV. thank you very much for watching, supporting FuseLogic TV. Please subscribe to our YouTube channel, and for more information on our services, go to FuseLogic.TV or .com. Thank you ladies and gentlemen, I'm your host Walter Schwabbi.
Thank you Walter.